We call our meeting to order. At this time, Ms. Steele, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Gibson?
Here.
Dr. Orth?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Crisco?
Here.
Mr. Bizani?
Here.
Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
All present.
We're going to ask you to stand as Mr. Ken Gibson will read us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together as a governing body and with the citizens to deliberate on our budget. Please equip us with wisdom and good judgment as we craft the budget for the coming year. I pray that you bless and protect the men and women of our armed services in law enforcement, our first responders, and bless and protect our schools, our teachers, our students, and staff. I ask all of these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Once again, good evening. On behalf of the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors, I'd like to welcome you to tonight's public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget and the tax rates being considered to support that budget. Ms. Steele tonight will combine the budget and tax rates into a single presentation, followed by a public hearing on those topics. It should be noted that there are two separate and distinct public hearings tonight, one for the budget itself and one for the tax rates. Those wishing to speak are asked to separate the topics and comment only on the specific matters contemplated in each hearing respectively. When you address the board, if you would please clearly state your name, your magisterial district, or street name. If you could, please limit your comments to three minutes so that everyone wishing to speak will be able to do so. The county attorney will be our timekeeper. Board members will not entertain questions regarding the topic of public hearings, but will take your comments into consideration during their deliberation on these items. Board members will have the opportunity to make individual comments if they wish at the end of the public hearing. The board will take no action on tonight's meeting on the budget or tax rate, as the board will be meeting over the next couple of weeks to analyze and deliberate alternative solutions. We welcome all citizens to those meetings, which will be Monday, April the 21st, Thursday, April the 24th, and Monday, April the 28th. So at this time, Ms. Steele, would you please make your presentation?
Thank you so much. Good to be with everybody tonight. I'm going to do a dual tag team presentation with Maria Callaway, our CFO. So we'll be slipping the mic back and forth. This is a... Yeah, thank you. This is a condensed version of the proposed budget. It was presented in full on March 17th, and it's been discussed at several subsequent work sessions and the Budget Town Hall, and it's also available online. In this overview, the table or the chart shows us the proposed budget by each of the funds. So it is the complete budget totaling to $188.9 million. Oh, thank you. Which is an increase of almost $20.4 million. And if you look at the red circle, you'll see the majority of the reasons for that, and that is looking at the capital projects. Also, I'd like to point out that the FY... This chart shows the FY '25 amended budget compared to the proposed and the differences that you can run down. The proposed capital projects include GVFR, Gloucester Volunteer Fire and Rescue Station 1, and a significant HVAC project for the school system. The Gloucester Fire and Rescue Station 1 is put into the budget to allow the contribution that we anticipate collecting and for the borrowing process to proceed during the year with the board's approval. To highlight a few of the expenditure main points, I just mentioned the debt funding for the Station 1. We also have debt funding for the Year 1 of the Utilities Capital Plan, and we have reserve from the school sales tax paying for five years of school HVAC projects. There is a 3% cost of living adjustment in for county employees with an additional 6% for the 911 dispatchers that was forwarded from the state to us. And then the budget includes one new staff position. Looking at the other side, the revenue summaries, the budget is balanced on a proposed 4.3 cent tax increase, which allows the general fund to maintain current services. The utilities budget is balanced on a 14% rate increase, which was approved in April and will go into effect next month. And as we've said several times, this is a challenging time. We have limited, and you'll hear more about that tonight too, limited or level revenue growth. And that's particularly in our largest source, which is our real estate tax. And we have another major downward pressure on real estate tax, not just the limited growth, but we have increasing tax relief from the veterans credits, which is expected to exceed two pennies' worth of relief in '26.
All right. So I'm going to dig in a little bit more into the general fund. The general fund is the county's largest fund. Well, not largest, but most operational fund. It's where most of day-to-day operational expenses can be found. The total general fund budget is $88.356 million, and that's an increase of about $2 million from fiscal year '25. Most of that is attributable this year to the transfer to the capital projects fund, which you can see circled towards the bottom right, $1.7 million. In total, the 48% of the general fund budget is transferred to the schools or other funds, and 52% of the general fund budget is for operations, which is that $46.1 million up at the top. So what makes up that $46 million? This is a listing of the functions of the general fund. You can see 47% of that operational amount is attributable to public safety, and 20% is attributable to general administration. I do want to point out that general administration has most of the constitutional offices, so that makes up about 25% of that function, and that is partially reimbursed by state funding. And then another 21% of general administration is information technology. And as you can see, the other portions are fairly small. So this is just that same amount broken down a little bit differently into the top five general fund expenditures. And you can see that 34% is school transfer, 15% sheriff and jail, fire and rescue at 6.4, and then debt service and capital at 4.7 and 4.6%. And so in the grand scheme of the pie, about 69% goes to schools, public safety, debt, and capital. So shifting gears to revenues in the general fund, as you can see, most of the general fund revenue is from property taxes, which is why... And we are proposing the 4.3 cent tax increase, and that's going to be part of that red circled amount of $53.9 million. You can see some of the other revenues in the fourth column, so that's the change column, are decreasing. And I wanted to mention that this year we created a grant fund, which I'm going to show you in just a moment. And a lot of that is attributed to just moving those revenues and expenditures into a separate fund. So we're not actually losing, you know, $830,000 in state funding. It's actually just going to be reported in a different fund, which I will show you. Other notable changes here, use of money in property, which is about midway down in the graph, is actually decreasing, and that is our interest revenue. And also miscellaneous revenue has decreased. That is attributable mostly to the surplus tax sales, which we budgeted in fiscal year '25, but not in '26 because it is not something that is... That we can confirm will be coming in every year. Also, we included in fiscal year '25's miscellaneous revenue budget the sale of the county garage, which is a one-time revenue. We also wanted to mention that there was an additional request from the school board, which is not included in this budget. That totals an additional $2 million. That includes the textbook adoption, student devices, fleet vehicles, maintenance parts and supplies, and the food service support, as well as $410,000 in general budget needs. And that total amount, if it were funded, would equal to a $0.36 tax increase. All right. So I wanted to... I have just one slide on the grant fund. So in this slide, I've condensed this a little bit. There is a full version in the original county administrator proposed budget. What this shows is the grant programs that are funded by both general fund dollars and grant funds. In total, the grant fund is $2.462 million. And of that, $2 million is grant revenue... Funded with grant revenues, $396,000 is funded with general fund dollars. And then you can see all those ones that are in the red box that are getting a portion of general fund dollars. And you can see the most... The largest ones there are School Resource Officer Grant Program, as well as Probation and Pretrial and Internet Crimes Against Children. So some very large programs involved in that. Okay. Pass it back to Carol.
The Capital Improvement Fund deals with the projects that are in the $50,000 and more category. And we have two different ways that we fund those projects. One is through debt financing, and the other is through cash or Pago. This is the list of the recommended projects. And there are the two that I've already mentioned, the Station 1 and HVAC for debt financing, and then a number of Pago projects. This is the same list, but divided up by what's the funding source. So if you look down at the very bottom, you'll see that $3.8 million from our Pago projects is coming from our fund balance, which is where we normally have been funding any of the capital projects that we do through Pago or through cash. And then combined in with the reserve account from the general fund, it would just be over $4 million. And you can see the grants also and the total for debt financing. When we pay for these things out of fund balance, it affects how much money is kept in the fund balance. And the board has a policy to keep between 14% and 16%. So this chart shows that with the proposed $3.8 million use in next year, we would be left with $22 million or $15.6 at the end. I wanted to note the projects that were requested and not funded for next year. So there's nearly $1 million of capital items that would... Will be pushed back, as well as a $6 million financing project of the sports complex that is not funded. The Utilities Fund, I have just a couple slides on that. One thing I think that I would point out that may be of interest, because there's been a lot of discussion about how much money that is going towards utilities. And if you look at the '25 amended budget to the proposed '26 budget, it looks like a pretty significant decline. And that is mainly due to the fact that we are using up the fund balance, which is not a good thing, but it's a necessary thing. We're doing that this year in funding capital projects that... Of items that were very important, as well as keeping up with our operation of the system. We've had to dip into that fund balance. So it's... Does include in next year borrowing, which hasn't been done in a little while. And there are, I think it's six projects listed for improvements for next year. Okay?
All right. So I'm going to start the summary and then pass it back to Ms. Steele to wrap the presentation up. So ultimately, we wanted to provide a little more detail on why a tax increase is being recommended this year. And it's two fairly simple but very important factors, which are inflation and increasing expenditures, as well as the level or declining revenues. So to touch on the first aspect, inflation and increasing expenditures, this slide shows a breakdown of the most significant increases in expenditures that we're experiencing this year. And while you can see that most do have a lot to do with compensation, some of those compensatory increases are inflationary related. And then second is the level or declining revenues. And you can see this lists out... This is the difference between fiscal year '25 budgeted and fiscal year '26 budgeted revenues. And that $134,770 at the top, that would be negative, is if a tax increase was not adopted. We would be seeing lower revenues for real estate taxes by $135,000. And otherwise, you can see quite a bit of red on that screen there. So why, when we start discussing a little bit about those level or decreasing revenues, why is that happening? And this slide, that is... That blue line shows our actual real estate revenue since 1998, and that orange line is adjusted for $2024. So this does end in 2024. And as you can see, if that gap were to stay about the same, our dollar would be keeping up with inflation. But you can see that orange, about 2020, that orange line starts to decline, and we're losing our purchasing power with our amount of revenue that we're bringing in. So this is another number slide. We... What I... We really were trying to understand and look back at the history to make sure we understand the basis for our revenue projections, where it's a pretty scary thing to say that our largest revenue source is declining, that are decreasing this year. So what this is, is March revenues for other revenue sources outside of real estate and personal property tax. So these are some smaller, but still substantial revenue sources, like sales, meals, lodging tax, but also interest revenue, permits fees. You can see the fullest there. And this is only what... Up to what we know for fiscal year '25. So these are March of each of these fiscal years, starting with 2019. And so 2019 all the way to 2024, you can see those bars getting a little bit taller. So each year, that... Those revenue sources are naturally increasing a bit. And I pulled the 2025 numbers this week, and you can see '25 is now starting, and these revenues in total, to lag behind. So in total, this really unfortunately supports that... That understanding that our revenues are just not keeping up with our expenditures.
Okay, wrapping things up. So we... There is a proposed tax increase. And this is ultimately so that we can keep the same level of staffing with one additional increase. We're focusing on public safety and addressing the inflation that's been mentioned several times, and partially addressing maintenance needs. What is not included, so that no one thinks we asked for the kitchen sink, everything and the kitchen sink, is besides the school board's request of over $2 million and the capital of about $1 million plus $6 million more in financing, there is no inclusion of a subsidy for the Utilities Fund, which has been mentioned several times. The majority of new positions were denied. And we also made adjustments on our works required salaries. Our FMRR, which is a very significant line, is our Facilities Maintenance Repair and Replacement Fund. For the second year, a dramatic cut to that this year would be proposing 41% less of what we need to do things of fixing equipment and buildings around. And then we did not full-fund department's operating requests, and we did not fully fund the implementation of a compensation study, and we did not fully fund external requests that were made to the county. This will be the chart that is discussed, or for your discussion, in the second public hearing. These are the advertised rates. And you can see the difference that is... Would be for 67 cents, and that is an almost nine-cent increase. And the tangible personal property was a 15 cents increase proposed. The sanitary districts, mosquito controls, those all, no increase there, and no use of fund balance either. They're all in good standing. It was mentioned about what's coming up, where we are tonight. And we've got a few more budget work sessions where we would encourage the public to come out and watch or watch on TV and continue to offer your input to your board members. And that is our hope that the budget will be adopted on April 30th. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Steele. Thank you, Ms. Callaway. At this time, we're going to open our public hearing on the proposed FY 2026 budget only.
We on? Yeah. There you go. I'm the CFO at Bay Aging, and this is an external agency request that we'd like to make and that we have made via the electronic submission. Bay Aging is the area agency on aging and community action agency, serving the Middle Peninsula and Northern Neck. First of all, I'd like to recognize our board members, one of whom came out tonight, our chair from Gloucester, Dr. Barry Gross. And our newest board member is also from Gloucester, represents Gloucester, Ms. Jeannie Hockaday. We appreciate their service on the Bay Aging Board. We divide our operations into three categories, health, housing, and transit. I'll take a little... Talk a little about our health and housing activities in our request, and then hand off to my colleague, David Foles, to talk about transit. As we've heard, we all are experiencing inflationary pressures on our operations. And so our request did call for a 3% increase. We certainly understand the pressures that the county is under, but we ask you to maintain that consideration until the budget is finalized. And that would take our request for the health portion of our operations from Gloucester to $16,701. As the summary sheet I passed out shows, these programs in the previous fiscal year served more than 4,000 residents of Gloucester County for services that included nearly 35,000 home-delivered meals, 23,000-plus home care hours, information, education, caregiver support, emergency home repair, homeless interventions, our adult daycare facility here in Gloucester Courthouse, and many other services that help the Gloucester County citizens of all ages live independently in their communities. Gloucester has also been a longtime participant in our Housing Choice voucher program, which last fiscal year, we administered 107 active vouchers for Gloucester County. And of course, we are also seeking a 3% increase in this request to a total of $25,669. Finally, on the impact sheet, it shows you the leveraging factor of your contributions. It is a fact that local match is required, particularly in transit, for us to draw down the much larger state and federal sources of revenue for these programs, including the Older Americans Act for the health and housing programs that I mentioned. So in summary, every dollar contributed by Gloucester County in the previous fiscal year translated into $78 of services to county residents. And finally, I'd like to point out that we do participate as an economic partner, as well in the county, having paid nearly $110,000 in the previous fiscal year in real estate taxes and utilities. And I understand they're going to go up. So you might consider our request for an increase. Thank you for your continued support and your partnership, serving the citizens of Gloucester. And I will turn it over to David Foles.
I'm David Foles, Transit Director for Bay Transit. We've been partnered with Gloucester County for 29 years now. Started out with one bus. Our first bus was here in Gloucester County. We're now up to six running buses. Three do a door-to-door service where we pick up your citizens, take them to where they need to go. And we started up a microtransit service three years ago. We now have three buses operating for the microtransit. Last year, we were able to provide 20,639 rides with our microtransit. Half of those are work-related. So we're getting your citizens to and from work. We are asking for a 3% increase to $135,088. And I'd just like to tell one little story. We had a citizen call and needed a ride to the hospital for a procedure, but they didn't have anybody that could go with them for the procedure. So one of our employees went and stayed at the hospital while they had the procedure so they could get it done, so they had somebody to ride home with them. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ken Hickman. I'm the Finance Director for the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Behavioral Health, previously Community Services Board. And I have some handouts. This is just a fact sheet for services for all counties, but specifically, this format is for Gloucester. We, of course, provide 24/7 crisis support for 10 counties within the Northern Neck and Middle Peninsula. We provide youth services. We have a peer resource center here in Gloucester. We have a clinical center for our services as well. And some facts. Total number of services that we provided to Gloucester County residents in FY '24 were 60,688 services. were 60,688 services, serving a total of 1,154 unduplicated clients. So that's actual individual clients that we've served. We also offer, we don't turn anyone away. We offer anyone that's not insured. We have a sliding fee scale, and of the services that we provided to county residents, 24% of our services were for the uninsured. Of that amount, we recognized 554,000 in reduced services, discounted services, I should say. We also have, of our agency's employees, 32% of our employees reside right here in Gloucester, and we provided $3,972,000 in wages. So what we're requesting this year is 225,760. That's a little over 10% increase, but that actually is a calculation based on the fact that DBHDS requires all CSBs to obtain a local match of 10%. So the way we did the budget is, we assumed a modest 2% increase on state funding, looked at where we would be, and that's how we came up with a 10.8% increase that we are requesting. So that's pretty much all I, all I have, if I can provide any questions, answers, or...
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chairman Smith, members of the board, Ms. Callaway, Ms. Steele. I'm Jim Camp. I'm the member-at-large on the Board of Directors of Gloucester Matthews Humane Society. I'm from the York District, by the way. I'm not asking for an increase. What we're asking for is for refunding. FY '04 to FY '23, this board funded us at a level of $97,000 a year. In FY '24, without notification, that funding was cut by $17,370. What we're asking for tonight is to go back to at least the $97,000 funding. As has been stated all night, tonight, the costs have gone up, our medical costs have gone up tremendously over the last 10 years, and particularly over the last two or three years. So we really need help with funding there. I want you to know that also, that we have reduced our staff by three and a half full-time positions in the last eight months, to cut our salaries as much as possible. So from an operations standpoint, this is, this is mostly needed. Now, some numbers I'd like to share with you, since I don't have a handout tonight, is that this past year, we had an intake of 2,203 animals. 667 of those were directly from Gloucester. We had 1,069 adoptions, 748 highway-to-home, our highway-to-home program is a guaranteed adoption program, where we carry animals to other states up along the East Coast for adoptions. For those of you who don't know, we own the Spay Neuter Clinic. In this past year, we did 4,541 alterations, spay-neuter alterations. That's up 364 from the previous year. We added an extra day because of the demand, and now we're, we're all doing alterations four days a week. 510 of those alterations were feral cats. We participate with the Friends of Gloucester County Community Cat Program, trying to reduce the feral cat colonies throughout the county. That's something that we're doing, but that's a Gloucester problem, but it's become a Gloucester Humane Society, Gloucester Matthews Humane Society problem. So we're funding all those, all those alterations every year. We're also funding a lot of the food for those colonies. We feed about 20 of those colonies. We also have a pet pantry where we support 115 local citizens who can't afford to keep their pets otherwise, and that runs us about $15,000 a year. I recently completed a survey of 12 like-sized communities with Gloucester, of populations between 33,200 and 45,200. The average contribution for animal care of those counties is .0042, or 42 one-hundredths of a percent. Gloucester participates at .0032%. That's a shortfall of $184,000. Now, can you imagine what it would cost Gloucester, not from an operational standpoint, but also from a capital standpoint, if we didn't exist? I mean, I can't imagine what the cost would be. It'd be at least $184,000 a year. The first-year cost would certainly be a lot more than that. So what we would like you to do is kindly consider taking us back to where we were funded in 2003, at, at $97,000 a year, at least that amount. And that would go a long ways to helping us run our organization. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, one other thing, I'm sorry, I didn't mention. I have with me tonight our new CEO, Tina Leoni, who's just joined us in the last few weeks. Ms. Leoni is here with us, and I hope you get to meet us, and I hope you'll all come to our groundbreaking on Thursday.
Good evening. Arlene Armentor with Gloucester Matthews Care Clinic, which is located at 6031 Industrial Drive. I'm here to thank you all tonight for the county's support of the clinic. The county has always been an amazing partner with us in caring for Gloucester's most vulnerable residents. For our external funding request for FY '26, we requested an increase of 16% or $10,000, which we realize this is a significant increase considering the economic challenges faced by everybody who's been up here to speak. Inflation has impacted everyone, and we do understand that there are more needs than there are funds available. But I did want to share with you all just a few of the challenges that the clinic is facing in light of some of the changes that have been happening over the last year or so. First of all, in the last two years, our patient count has increased by 24%. Medicaid patients, often who come to us because they cannot find a local provider, those Medicaid patients make up 47% of our practice, yet our Medicaid revenue is only about 7% of our total revenue. When I came to you last year and told you about the blood draw service that we initiated with LabCorp for our community, area residents' usage of that blood draw service, the first quarter of this year compared to first quarter of last year, we are up about 31% in the usage of that. And residents are greatly appreciative because they don't have to take as much mistime from work or from school. Our biggest challenge is healthcare workforce. There are fewer licensed clinical volunteers post-pandemic in our area than there were. A lot of our volunteers have just fully retired, and it is very difficult, as you can imagine, for a charity clinic, in order for us to attract and retain qualified staff, especially nurses, it is impossible for us to compete with the area health systems in terms of rates of pay. So that's a big challenge for us. And the final big unknown right now is that we don't know what's going to happen at the federal or the state level with Medicaid. What we are prepared for is that if Medicaid is eliminated or reduced, we do anticipate seeing an increase in our uninsured patient numbers, and of course, a decrease in our Medicaid revenue. But we will be here to help anyone who doesn't have healthcare, for whatever reason, we will be here to help provide care for them at the care clinic. So I just wanted to come again to thank you for considering these challenges that we're facing. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have. Thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Susan Austin. I'm from the Ware District, I'm sorry, York District, I think. I don't, yeah. I'm in Next Era. I've been trying to understand, I'm not up on the charts and everything that you have in your presentation. There was one thing I wrote down, a school transfer. I don't know what a school transfer is, but it's going to cost 34% of the budget, so I just don't know what it means. And you talk about your staffing levels. You're gonna, you're gonna need another staff staffer. You want to fund an increase, and, you know, maybe you have to do without the additional person, or just don't have an increase. I mean, you're faced with the same things that we're faced with. When we don't have the money to spend, we cut back, we tighten our belts, and we do without. All the people that spoke before me had very good reasons for having increases. You can't fault them for asking for these things, because it's something that we've gotten used to having, but we can't have these things anymore. I'm sorry about the Humane Society. They do a good service, but, you know, there's a lot of people out here that are suffering. Our personal property tax is going to go up. My vehicles are getting older. I've got a 26-year-old truck I drive. I mean, every year, it costs me hundreds of dollars to, to pay for. I'm not sure why. I guess I'm paying for road uses, but everything's costing more, and you know that. You don't have to listen to me talk about it, but what happens when we're visited by Doge? What are we going to do when they want to cut half of your staff members? We have to, we have to be prepared for this, because it's coming. It is coming. Oh, yeah, you can shake your head all you want, but it's coming. And we have to get serious. Thank you very much.
Good evening, guys. I've got a little bit of a frog, so forgive me. Thank you. Kathleen Jones with the York District. I want to tell you a little bit of my history, just real briefly. I retired from procurement, and I bought major equipment, like millions of dollars of equipment. I worked for Siemens Automotive. I handled all their contracting, most of their major contracting, and a major buys in the assembly line. I worked for the shipyard. I bought major equipment for the shipyard, for the submarines, like million-dollar accelerators. I worked for Jefferson Lab for a while. I bought their major equipment. I was fortunate to have the FAR and D-FAR, because I got to look at the prices, and the suppliers had to give me more information sometimes than other people were privy to. And what I found out is, when you get in the weeds, you find out how much spending really doesn't have, is really peripheral. And I, when I see your charts, I know that it looks like there is a lot of need. I hear a lot of need, too. But I suspect you're going to be just like me. I don't have a sugar daddy to go to, like a taxpayer. I have to live within my income. And I think that, that you could probably do that, too. I know a 3% across-the-board increase for, for employees sounds great, and they're great people. I've dealt with them. They really are. But sometimes you just can't have that. And maybe this is one of those times, you just can't do that. It just doesn't make sense. Maybe an extra $93,000 a year employee would make life a little easier, but maybe this year is not the time for that, because you have other capital projects, and Humane Society, and, and WellCare things that are needed. You know, again, I see the high charts, but it makes me wonder, from my background, what's included in those charts? If you dig down into weeds, and Mr. Pizzani, I know you know exactly what I'm talking about, where are they? I don't have a sugar daddy. I'm asking you to tighten your belt. I have rental units. I try to keep my renters' rent low. You talk about affordable housing. I try to do that. They're good people. They don't make a lot of money. But guess what? You're going to make me pass out on these costs, because I can't absorb them. So you talk about affordable housing, so you're hurting the landlords, because we've got to pass those down, and we don't want to. We're trying to keep rents low, at least people like me and people, other people I know. So I'm asking you to look there, tighten your belts, and maybe not have extra employees, and maybe you don't get that extra raise. Maybe you give merit raises. Imagine that for people who've really worked hard, instead of giving across-the-board raises. Ken Gibson, when I mentioned last time about a Gloucester Doge, you wrote it down. You know, that's not a bad idea. Get some, you know, community people to help you. They're experienced. We've got smart people in this community. You know, where can we cut? What are we willing to live with? I'm disappointed, because I talk to people all the time, saying, "Come, show yourself to the board. They need to hear you, because what we hear on the street doesn't look like this." You know what I heard? I had Bunko today, that's a dice game, 12 ladies, and they're great ladies, nine of them said, "What's the use? They're going to do what they want to anyway." You know, "What's the use?" And I say, "Because they need to hear from you." And, and I'm talking, I don't know why citizens don't come out and say it, because they're saying it outside there. I promise you, they're saying it, and they're not liking it. Maybe that makes your life easier, because you can do what you want to, and I understand that. But it's, you know, ultimately, we're going to have to report to the citizens at some point, God willing. So I thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it, and God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment.
Yes.
This is from Ann Thompson from the Ware District. With reference to the proposed budget, considering the accounting technology available today, there is no need for a $700,000 study to analyze the staff raise issues and protocol. There was a public referendum a couple of years ago on the fire department and tax increase issues, which was voted down, yet here it is in the budget. There is no question about the need for a larger code-compliance department, but it doesn't belong on Main Street. Whatever happened to the idea of a third-party assessment regarding viable and most appropriate locations? The assets surrounding the current facility, plus the most recent land purchase, could all be sold to help finance the new expansion?
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else disclose our public hearing for our proposed budget for FY '26? And we will now open our public hearing for our proposed tax levies for the calendar year of 2025. Is there anyone like to speak? Is no one like to speak? If no one will close our public hearing on the proposed tax levies. At this time, we want to have board comments. Any board comments? On either hearing? Yes, Mr. Gibson?
Yeah, oh, no, go ahead. You go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted a point of clarification. The citizen comment mentioned the compensation study at a price of $700,000. I thought that was at 50,000 to 60,000. Can we get some clarification?
The, the 690 is to fulfill what that survey and what that compensation study presented. The 690,000 is right sizing our, our pay for our folks.
Yes, Dr. Wolf?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everyone that came out here tonight, and I agree, it is unfortunate that we don't see more people come out and tell us how they feel. You know, like you, you know, I go to the gym, and I hear many of the same things that people talk about. And, you know, this is not a done deal. You know, we have very vigorous discussions coming up in the next few weeks. This is definitely a very complicated and challenging year, as you've seen from the numbers. One point of clarification, just if you don't mind, the staff person was a person requested by the Sheriff Department, and he presented a strong case as to why they needed. And as you can see, the budget that they have is significant, but that is their, we want to keep this county safe. It is a safe county. I know some people may not think that, but the numbers that we see indicate... What are you doing? Checking my blood pressure? What? Why?
Talk now.
Okay. So, anyway, thank you very much. Like I said, a challenging year. We got the fire department that we are debating, and will certainly fund out of the capital plan. We have some discussions as to the actual funding mechanism, and that will be on the board docket. The school transfers, that is the money that goes right from our tax to the schools. And as you can see, there's a lot of needs that aren't being met by us. I had an email from an individual that expressed concern about the changes that have occurred in the school system. You know, we have school resource officers. We never used to have those. We have those now because of school safety, kids worrying about safety. That wasn't there years ago. And look at the amount of money that we spend on school resource officers. It's, it's a sad fact of life that these kids have to deal with the possibility of something happening to them. And then, of And then, of course, the opioid crisis is at home. You know, we use some of the money that we have. One of our staff members works very hard with the schools to make sure that we use that money appropriately. But it is a tough year, and I can tell you, we will spend quite a few sessions trying to figure out how to balance the budget and not have the tax raise that has been proposed. It's not going to be easy. Thank you.
Okay. Is anyone else? Boardroom? Yes, Mr. Chris Pizzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to take a moment to thank everybody who came out tonight from the different civic organizations, as well as the citizens to come out. It's not easy to talk in public, as I'm well aware. I had a very hard time my first year on this board, getting that, getting over that. Participation is key. The more we hear from you all, the better it is for us to make our decisions. I want to thank you all again for that. We do have some work to do, and I do not know if we can avoid a tax increase at all, but we will try to minimize the impact to the greatest extent that we can.
Yes, sir. Mr. Pizzani.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for everyone coming here. I wish we could see more people come out to speak. Maybe they're watching on television. It's very disappointing to me because if you're a citizen and you're concerned about the way we spend our tax monies, mine too, you should come out and let us know what is going on, and that's just disappointing for me personally. But it seems to me that with the pay raises for our county employees, the state is going to supplement some of that, but it's basically an unfunded mandate because next year, once we get the pay raise, then we're going to have to, it's a recurring cost that we're going to have to take care of next year. I'm of the opinion that maybe perhaps not a recurring cost, but a one-time bonus payment to employees so that we don't have to face that recurring cost in future years. That might be the more prudent way, especially since right now inflation is down to 2.8% if we believe what the government says. We're asking for a 4% pay increase for our employees. That's more than a COLA, cost of living, that's more than the COLA increase. So I think maybe perhaps a bonus would be appropriate in this case. More importantly, you never hear localities talk about, maybe we should try to tighten our belt a little bit. I know our federal government's attempting to do that. Love Elon Musk or not, he's not cutting Medicaid. That is not going to happen. What he's cutting is the fraud that's going on in both Medicaid and in Medicare and in Social Security and the IRS and all these other departments that have been overspending our tax monies. So I hate to hear every time, "Oh, they're cutting this and they're cutting..." That is not what's happening. If you can cut waste, fraud, and abuse, that's one thing, but cutting Medicare and calling all these entitlement programs is not what is happening. So why can't we mandate a 3% to 5% tightening of our belt to make up the difference in these tax increases? So again, you're right, Ms. Jones, I do see the numbers. And it's possible that we can do this. We just mandate it and make it happen. We've done it before, years and years ago, way before I came into office 12 years ago. This is my last year, my last term here at this fine Board of Supervisors, but perhaps it's time that we look at our budget and say, you know, let's cut 3% and 5% and see what happens. I know we can't do pay raises across the board or selective pay raises because it has to be done across the board per state rules. But the other question I have is if these tax increases are levied against the citizens, it's for revenues that you're going to collect from January through June, the end of June of this year. And that's additional about $1.1, $1.2 million that's not in this budget. It's going to be, you know, it's not accounted for in this upcoming budget. The revenues we'll collect will start from January instead of from July 1 to the end of the year. It's collected retroactively, which is why I always wanted and advocated for a calendar year instead of a fiscal year budget starting on June 30 and ending on July 1. So I've asked Ms. Callaway if there's a way to do that. Is there a way that we can sequester this money? And it is peculiar because, you know, you never know if you're going to get all the collections, but there is at least a way of collecting that money and accounting for it before it gets spent because it's going to go into the general fund, and we'll have to decide on where it gets spent, of course, but it should be accounted for in some way. So those are my concerns that I have for this budget, and a lot of people are something, come from my district. My district, I hear all the time, you go to Buck Store, you go to Marvin Crane Store, all I do is get yelled at because I hear about a 4% tax increase, right? Go drive around in Guinea and see how those people, those people live, right? I'm fortunate in my life, but a lot of others are not as fortunate as I am. So a tax increase is difficult. I'm a conservative libertarian. I want government out of my life if I can. I don't want them to be, you know, breathing down my neck, wanting this and wanting that and wanting this and wanting that. It's difficult for people. We're a rural community, Gloucester County is. You probably know that the Coleman Bridge tolls are going to come off in January of next year. What is going to happen when that happens, right? Most people don't want to come to Gloucester County because of the tolls, but it's going to be off. And when the tolls came off in 1975 until 1992, when they re-imposed the tolls, we were the fastest-growing county in the state. It's probably going to happen again when the tolls come off. So we have to be aware, what are we going to do with our comprehensive plan? Are we going to limit growth to prevent that from happening, or we're just going to let people just come in and the rest of us are going to have to pay for it? Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? No further comments? Board members? Okay, Ms. Steele. Review of our budget adoption schedule.
Yes, as we mentioned in the presentation, thank you, Whitney. We will be meeting Monday night at the courthouse for the first budget work session and working our way through until, again, hopefully, adoption on April 30.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Steele. So, nothing else?
Motion for adjournment. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.